Us to stay. We were asked to stay in home and wear masks and keep others safe, care for the neighbor, correct? Whereas number five, haven't you heard of HIPAA? I don't believe anybody's histories, medical histories were compromised. The right for autonomous medical decision making regarding our bodies unthreatened by censorship of any government control. That's what it says on the resolution. Need I mention women's rights? In this section, are you referring to a Hippocratic oath or a hypocritical one? Whereas number six on there, I doubt God would say not to wear a mask to help thy neighbor or purposely go out and infect people. Why would, would God say, don't worry about the other guy, be selfish? This gentleman is correct, correct. You should stay home, but many people did not. Therefore, on that statement, the why is it a two thirds vote? To make it after, to reinstate after 28 days, what now I'm at a full vote. Why, why is it two thirds all of a sudden? And then suppose it's not a virus that starts the next pandemic, suppose it's a fungus. Suppose it spreads by, it spreads by touch. Suppose it's on almost everything. Suppose immunized, compromised people, elderly, kids and males are most susceptible to skin rashes. And skin ulcers that rot to the bone may be causing long-term side effects such as infertility, blindness and death. Suppose it's hard and expensive to treat. Suppose I am saying it's incredibly contagious with a five day window to be infected. Suppose, suppose you're asked to wear gloves to go everywhere. To stay home for five days to ensure you wouldn't spread this skin eating fungus, would you do it? Therefore, policy resolution will be seriously flawed for an infection like this. And we do not know what our future holds for the future health disasters, do we? LMS and all health departments have safe procedures already in place and a plethora, for a plethora of disasters. Nothing will stop an end, a pandemic or an endemic epidemic. But much can be said about mitigating one and the spread of one. The verbiage of this resolution puts the brakes on any helpful mitigation relies on non-medical commissioners, your commissioners to determine your health. So who is serving who? Lastly, an emergency commission would be completely redundant and counterproductive to the citizens of Elder County. Misinformation, distrust, more government interference, again, your commissioners would have found. Let's not repeat mistakes. Let's learn from them. Please vote no on resolution 2023.
Anybody else? Who wants, please?
Lisa Howard.
Yep.
Nancy Tomcher, I also am against resolution 2023 for all of those.
Please three times. Five agenda. We got anything on the agenda?
Did you look correctly?
Um, number, also one maybe I'll tell you on, but I don't think, number 18 is the standard. Instead of the name.
Will we accept the? Agenda with the correction on item 18?
All spark. Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Six, agenda, and we got a big one. Um. Does anybody have anything on that? Comments? Questions? If you do. Do you want to overlap me? Thank you real good on that.
Sure.
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
One second.
Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
For seven minutes. Eight of the eight public hearing meeting minutes of October 10th. East Committee of the whole minutes, October 10th, Board of Commissioners meetings, minutes of October 16th. And Special Board of Commissioners meeting, October 27th. I didn't find it in the state.
In the management of me.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Would we tap the minutes from previous meetings?
Now, second. Roll call on that. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Number eight. IT. Service pit. Um, they have not opened those yet, have we? Those, those.
Exactly.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't open them. Or I didn't see them open. Okay.
You may copy.
We have. One from DTEC. In the month, if I'm correct here. Uh, comes out to per year. Fifty four thousand and one from Integra. I guess it's great, there's more depth here. It doesn't have a courier thing, but it's seventy two. Eighty six, um, four hundred. That was everything. Um, yeah. Then it was something bigger than, than Microsoft. Three sixty five, fifty, and that was an extra. Well, from those well. And this is a wonderful book. Now we have representatives in both companies. Do we have any questions over the meetings?
If you might, our question to answer.
If you have one. Has anyone got any?
I would make a motion that we accept the bid from DTEC for one year and the amount of fifty four thousand dollars. All included.
You were at the meeting on fifteen.
You and I both were.
And you.
Yeah, they checked on all, all the boxes that we asked for, everything in the RFP they asked that they had. And they also, they, uh. When we need onsite support, they're literally three and a half blocks up the street.
Well, I'll support you there. We were there. I wasn't there.
Yeah, Dean and I were both there.
Any discussions, any questions, Greg?
No.
Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Number nine, that is, that is over committing. Both buying and hauling bids. Who has done what? The Mercs. And you're really?
Yeah.
What's I know, I know, I used to have the way.
You don't want to look at them anyway.
Right. Please let Ricky run this portion.
This one here is from Drew. Twenty twenty fourth season. Four thousand dollars. Uh, twenty four, twenty five season, four thousand two hundred and fifty. Twenty five, twenty six season, four thousand five hundred. It has got standing fifty dollars per occurrence. This one here comes from Seaver Enterprises. Not me. It's twenty five thousand dollars. For twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five is twenty five thousand dollars. Twenty five, twenty six is twenty five thousand dollars. The rate is a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. Jerusalem was eighty seven. Then you have the animal shelter. Here, five thousand dollars. For twenty three, twenty four, twenty five and twenty six. Drew didn't give us one for that.
He included only one, or?
Yeah, he didn't want, you know, animal shelters.
Okay.
I never seen the bid for any of the state of the freedom or no.
Uh, no, it just the.
Excuse me, the one I gave you first was the animal shelter.
Okay. Okay, that makes more sense.
The other one was his, dear.
Okay.
The other one is for seasonal.
Yeah.
Snow, bowing and hauling is seven thousand dollars. Um, yeah, twenty fives, year twenty four, twenty five is seventy two hundred dollars. And twenty five, twenty six is seventy five hundred dollars. Their bid is eighty nine dollars now.
Well, quite a significant difference.
Yeah.
Right here, I assume that by them submitting the bid, they're all in with the RFP about the damage and stuff now. So we won't have that concern as much anymore and adding us, for being Jerusalem.
Yeah.
Those were our biggest concerns.
Over twenty forty seven.
Right.
Over there.
Having some reinsurance for the damages may be done.
Yeah, here's their shit box. I believe it's fine. This one I'm sure that always on it, so. We're worried about.
They may not have this to that until after they can't, and like everyone there.
Getting that.
But that would be a detail of the.
Like a million dollars.
And all the liability.
Yeah.
I've learned, I've come to learn that's pretty standard.
They've been on both things. Oh, what's your pleasure here?
Even discussing, I mean, looks like we're pretty much in the same vein of both of them.
Yeah.
Would be. An error, I think we're, I mean, you're talking about a fourteen thousand dollar difference.
Oh, yeah. What I would recommend though is doing a, um, put it in there that. We are going to run out of thirty days.
Yes.
I believe it would be thirty days. Before that contract starts. There's any contract.
So that.
Yeah.
In that case, I'd make a motion that we give Drew thirty days notice. On the existing contract that we're going to cancel that and then accept the new contract and for how many years is that one for me? Thirty three, for the next three years.
I'll second that. Roll call, please. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
I'll say yes.
Commissioner Seaver, you worry about.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, kind of life. Turn back order to Dean there. Number nine, or number ten, we had the Humvee bid.
She never looked over there.
How many, are you buying, Mike?
I'm buying, no. They're on there, they're on there. Hard to find parts in the garage in the day. I wrote lots of them back in the day.
Wyatt's there, man.
That's his kid.
Wyatt Seaver, a bid of sixteen hundred and fourteen dollars. The only bid we were. For the three Humvees listed for. That's the only bit we got. Correct. Then I have to reboard. And it was a minimum bid of one thousand, yeah, so that. Well, they only called sixteen, fourteen. I don't know, what was it? Fourteen, sixteen, so fourteen dollars, sixteen hundred and fourteen dollars.
One thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. All right, I will make a motion that we approve the bid from Wyatt Seaver for the three Humvees that the county currently owns for one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars.
Roll call.
No.
Commissioner Caprusa?
Yes.
Yeah. Well.
So he's still so far.
Right here. All around the end.
I don't want it.
Me either.
I had number twelve. Twenty twenty four MSU agreement for extension, certainly eleven.
Eleven.
Oh, no, animals garage construction bids. Do I want to listen to this one?
I feel like it'd be okay.
Oh, yeah, it's got a name card. They don't know we got it. We got one bid from Norm Construction. Forty one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And that is to come out of the animal fund? Yes. Scan it.
Same bid we had last.
Yeah.
Have the last time.
Yeah. Any questions on that?
No, no.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
One second now.
In front of the conference. Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now we're on as well. Twenty twenty four MSU agreement for extended extension services. And I believe somebody here is big on that.
Bye.
So what you guys basically have in front of you is that MOA, so a memorandum. Um, essentially, it's the same thing that we put towards you guys every year. We use all of our mileage dollars to, um, find our four age position. Um, and with that, oh, even actually, that's wrong. I shouldn't have said that. So basically, that MOA states what we use for our four age person. Um, and Anna said, and we have other people in the staff, MSU extension, we pay for everybody else. Um, in that office and around that office, we also pay for the people out in Chadmont, the ones that have extension appointments. That's something for you guys to realize too. So in your county, um, just off the top of my head, it's probably at least like a four to one. So we put in four, you guys put in one, another, you guys put in one dollar, we put in four. And that MOA, just, just we, just so that we continue to have that partnership and that agreement, and that's just what that states. It's essentially the same thing that we give you guys every year.
Basically, we're just turning back over the money from the village of the voters.
Right, until we're up for the village again in twenty six.
And that's a half to the right. Um, what was in there?
Um, the amount is in there on page three.
Yeah.
And basic, and if you want to know what that, so you'll see that two amounts under, um, section C. So it shows the base amount. And then it also, um, shows the additional personnel, which is just the other part of our four age position. And then it just shows the total of those two amounts. And if you have any questions about those, I can give you answers about that as well.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Did I hear you mention the forestry part of?
Yeah, that's Anna's position.
Do you deal with the, the conservation district?
Yeah, I work pretty closely with her also, if anyone's met her, she's the, um, forestry assistant program, forestry pro here, Tommy. Um, and then some program in the third.
Oh, good.
And then I also work really closely with conservation districts across the whole Eastern U.P. And that's on the board for U.P. and R.C. and D.
Oh.
So we do work really closely. With many entities.
The Soil District isn't the only one then.
Oh, no, gosh, no, we have four institutes. But we're working on a campaign so that you guys will understand what we all do because, you know, we're not only. We're trying to.
Why not that ever stop me?
We're a big, a big organization.
Well, sometime we welcome you to come and.
Yes, for sure.
Just keep it like, going like ten minutes.
Oh, well then, sorry.
No, no.
No, I, I'm just kidding, but we are coming up in, in fact, in my district specifically in the Eastern U.P., just coming up with a digital campaign because. So many people don't understand what exactly we do and like, we are joking, like, we don't even necessarily understand what everybody else does and the other institutes. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be pounding on your door.
Um, can we get a motion on that? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. Everybody got questions, then roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
We're thirteen, terminated the West Law subscription and who, Lexus Nexus, the big subscription, our prosecutor is not here. Um, looks like you got a deal. On him, you got some information more on that or? So we would normally appropriate twelve thousand to the library. We were paying us four portions to Schoolcraft County for the prosecutor to use their West Law. You would cancel that. And the current West Law subscription move to, um. About Matthew Bunder with, um, Lexus Nexus. Eighty six hundred. Library and thirty six hundred for his portion, so it may end, it ends up being three more. But he talked him down to a two percent increase instead of seven, so in the long run. There's, there's some savings there, but initially it's just a three hundred dollar difference. Sixteen hundred dollar a year saving.
Still savings.
It's all, it all has that.
And he said he much prefers the.
Yes.
The, um. The new line during his office.
Yep. Eighty seven hundred.
I know.
I will move that we terminate the West Law subscription and approve the Lexus Nexus subscription. Which for the law library and the prosecutor.
I'll second that. Roll call. Do I have a question? Is, uh. Is, he's got that West Law subscription now?
He now ha, he has Lexus Nexus for his office, the log library is.
West Law.
The West Law.
Yeah.
Basically cancelling them and flipping them. He will now, he will now have West Law and the library will be Lexus Nexus. Or ways versa, it's basically, we're taking and flipping.
No, I think he's wanting all of one, oh, yeah, no, he's keeping up with it. He's saying a little off for the twinkle, he likes the legal part of that. Library.
Right. That's all I remember as he explained it last week or so.
And I asked him, why can't we just get our own library, which is thirty grand of books, which is. Yes, that's going to save us in the long run, but you got to update them constantly.
Every year.
So, yeah, this is what we want to, we have to do.
And then they're giving a book. Big heavy ones.
Yep. Roll call, get answered.
Yeah.
Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Yes. Number fourteen, crew ambulance mileage renewal language for the presidential primary ballot. We're a little ahead, Sheriff, so go ahead and go and jump on. Most of it will be on the clinical primaries, be nonpartisan ballot, but we have to pick it up, right? It would be subject to the head. Well, if it's a renewed restore back to full, but it'll, it'll get reduced again because of the head injury. Because of what? Head injury there. Okay. Your population.
Stay forward, I'll make a motion that we approve the language for the mileage proposal for the ballot. For the.
Ambulance mileage.
The ambulance mileage for the presidential primary ballot next year. Backing anybody?
I'll second. Any stuff on that? Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yeah.
We're fifteen. Roll call, Sheriff Union tentative agreement. Twenty twenty three. You and Nick, you were there.
Look good to me when I read it over. Read it three times to make sure that I wasn't missing something that you had. You know, you said you had, the treasurer was there in presence, so you know that the dollar most work for a budget.
Did you write this one up, Cole, or did? What do we want to do with this? You're lucky.
Alright, so we.
Accepted, I like, is that what we want to do? I'd like to accept it. It's got to be accepted on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Want to ratify it? I don't believe they're voting on it yet. But either way, if one cancels all, both know one, we come back to table anyway, one did already accepted.
I will move that we accept the tentative agreement for the Elder County Sheriff's Office Union as it is in front of us.
I'll support that. Questions? Roll call. Commissioner Caprusa?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Sixteen, this is for the courthouse employee, tentative agreement.
Sixteen, this is for the courthouse employee, tentative agreement. Questions on that one? Should we explain what you meant by gap? I don't know, these, oh, two commissioners.
I figured it out.
Oh.
Yeah, so anything between your defined working hours in the contract up to the eight, if you work through it, you can take that difference as leave a one-to-one ratio. Um, as opposed to there's, oh, I have one, one and a half, which you would convert your overtime, so this is specifically for time during the working day.
So they end up working through their lunch, they can take thirty minutes somewhere else.
That doesn't end. If they work through the lunch, for thirty minutes, they can take it as thirty minutes. Well, they, they have to, you know, if it doesn't quite hit the eight hour point where comp and kicks in, they will still take it. I think it's a win-win for the county and the employee.
As is the, I don't know, Rick got a chance to see, right, he's either the
On all three.
Four days of holidays there.
Yeah, all three, it's um, it's so everybody else knows, if it gets approved by all three unions also, the county courthouse will be open four more days. It'll be Marko for King Day, President's Day, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day. Offices will be open. So they'll be working, but then that gives them, they'll be able to take that and use it as another personal day, it helps out both younger employees, well, all employees, but younger employees that are just coming in, gives them more time off, doesn't cost the county anything. Because we're already paying for them there anyway, plus it gives four more days of public service, so.
I thought that was great.
Yeah, they make four holidays discretionary, right?
Right. Right, so they can't all take a personal day, they have to get four, forty-eight hours approval.
The office doesn't have to be open that day, so not everybody can take it off, but
Can't all decide they still.
So if somebody does want to take it off for certain reasons, they should have a choice if their supervisor says, yeah, we have enough staffing to do that.
We got a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
We'll call.
Commissioner Caprota? Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
And finally seventeen, court staff here now. All in different part.
About no big thing there was moved for funeral leave. Um, a parent of the child, of a child, so.
So they can still attend with their child.
Right, that might not be their spouse anymore or anything, but they still can be there with their child. Are we? Yeah, with donating sick leave.
Yeah, you had that.
Yeah. Donated that also into all contracts. Or anybody in the county can donate sick leave to another person. And you have to use it though, it's not say, well, I'm gonna retire, I have a bunch of sick leave, I can only get paid off this much, so let me give this to so-and-so, it's only to be used to be used, or donated to be used. Which doesn't cost us nothing, but it helps. And also they got gap time in there, in their language.
Well, I know this is I wa, I walked into the done product.
Wow.
They appreciate it. And except that the negotiations were very smooth and very cordial.
They were. And all three are gonna be reopened in the third year for them. Just for financial only, we're hoping at that point that we can get some kind of tariff tax going. Uh, we're gonna need help from the public in that, couldn't get that going, you know, why should the public be paying for services for these million people that come in, you know? There should be pay-to-play, everybody's gotta help out, so if we can get that, that'll help break from your roads to your ambulance to everywhere. Hopefully by then we have something and we can offer more than two percent to our employees. We wanna get it to where we have, we have good employees, we wanna keep our good employees. And to keep them, we gotta be um competitive with wages, everything else, and we, when people retire to recruit new employees, we wanna be able to have uh something to look at, not just like, well, you know, we're looking from Eldred County to a different county, we like to be hopefully be able to recruit the cream. That was novel.
We got a motion for that one?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion again.
I'll second that one. It's only doing.
And more discussion? We'll call.
Commissioner Caprota?
Yeah.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yeah.
Number eighteen, Stand Up Elder, regarding resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
I'll bring the chair. I don't wanna stand and look like a clown. Can I go?
No.
All right, uh, good afternoon, um, I am here, my name is Kristi Knouse. And this is Jeannie Verbrugghe, we are members of a group called Stand Up Alger. It's a grassroots movement of local people whose vision it is to uphold citizens' rights and liberties. Uh, we are the local chapter of a bigger group called Stand Up Michigan. Um, and it's, we've been two, three years now, um, together as a group, um, and we are here to present some thoughts today regarding um resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, um, I'll let Jeannie kind of get started, and then I have some comments towards the end, um, before we finish, we'll try not to be too lengthy, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, I'm, again, I'm Jeannie Verbrugghe. Um. I thank you for even uh considering passing this resolution. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen follows the law established in the Michigan Emergency Management Act, the EMA of nineteen seventy-six. The wording in your resolution is mirrors the wording in, in our law of Michigan. We need a county resolution such as twenty twenty-three dash eighteen because Governor Whitmer did not follow the law in regard to the EMA of nineteen seventy-six. Which resulted in an injurious extension of emergency procedures and policies. Please allow me to review some of the history. Two acts were used by Governor Whitmer to implement the counteractive measures of COVID nineteen. The, um, the EPGA or the Emergency Power of the Governor Act of nineteen forty-five was passed in response to a nineteen forty-three Detroit riot. Its use, with one exception, was limited to immediate and relatively short-lived civil disturbances. It, it constitutionality was repeatedly challenged over the years, especially when applied to situations that did not involve rioting. The EMA of nineteen seventy-six, the Emergency Management Act of nineteen seventy-six, was an act to provide for planning, mitigation, response, and recovery from natural and human-made disasters within and outside the state. And in that act, it states that after twenty-eight days, the governor shall issue an executive order or proclamation declaring the state of disaster terminated. Unless a request by the governor for an extension of the state of disaster for a specific number of days is approved by both houses of the legislature, that's what our law states. This is the exact thing that we're actually trying to pass in twenty, our, our resolution. Governor Whitmer issued on March tenth uh, an executive order that declared a state of emergency pursuant to both the EPGA of nineteen forty-five and the EMA of nineteen seventy-six. Governor Whitmer then requested the legislature extend the state of emergency and state of disaster declaration to seventy days according to uh the EMA of nineteen seventy-six requirements. In response, the legislature extended the state of emergency and state of disaster only through April thirty of twenty twenty. Next, when April thirty arrived, Governor Whitmer issued an executive order ordering that a state of emergency remain under the EPGA of nineteen forty-five, which was an old law that was, can, as I said before, was, was challenged for its constitutionality. She circumvented the EMA of nineteen seventy-six by using the EPGA of nineteen forty-five. Then, on October second, twenty twenty, the United States District Court for the Western District of Michigan declared that the EPGA of nineteen forty-five was unconstitutional because it violates the non-delegation clause contained in Article Three, Section Two of the Michigan Constitution. In addition, that same court in October declared not only that the EPGA was unconstitutional, it also unanimously held that the governor of Michigan did not have the authority to issue or renew any executive orders related to COVID nineteen under the EMA of nineteen seventy-six after April thirtieth. Due to the fact that the state legislature had not extended it beyond that date. So now we have Governor Whitmer ignoring the EMA of nineteen seventy-six and the fact that the legislature told her to cease and desist on her emergency measures as of April. She circumvented that and used the now undeclared unconstitutional EPGA of nineteen forty-five to extend her injurious government overreach illegally. So the overreach of government lasted from April thirtieth of twenty twenty to July fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. And I said injurious overreach. The government-driven countermeasures to the COVID nineteen pandemic resulted in injury to the people of the state of Michigan. Due to extended closures, small businesses dissolved, lives were lost to suicide. Thousands died in nursing homes due to misguided policies. Supply chains were interrupted, inflation skyrocketed. There was a documented substantial loss of learning across all public schools in the state. Young children were made to wear masks in spite of the recommendations from the WHO and the CDC which stated that children five and under were at risk for brain development and social skills by wearing masks, these were stated by the WHO and the CDC, and yet they were ignored by our county, our health department. Because kids that were in their Great Start Program were required to wear masks in Eldred County. The list, this list is not all-inclusive of the injuries sustained by people in Michigan under the government-driven countermeasures that were extended unconstitutionally by the governor. So in conclusion, now today we're discussing the resolution twenty twenty-three eighteen because Governor of Michigan constitutionally and illegally implemented policies that resulted in injury to the people of state of Michigan. The very person, the governor of the state, who is supposed to uphold our state constitution and abide by the laws of Michigan, did not do so. Now our commissioners are at a point where they are deciding whether or not to be resolved to uphold the current law that we have under the EMA of nineteen seventy-six at the county level by voting yes for resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. And unless the EMA of nineteen seventy-six would be declared unconstitutional as was the EPG, EPGA of nineteen forty-five, the commissioners are by their oath required to uphold it. The passing of resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen will do just that at our county level.
So to bring it back, you know, to, you know, our concern, remember, you know, as SUA, we're concerned about our rights and liberties, um. Resolution twenty twenty-three eighteen gives me and the voters, the constituents of the county, a voice through you. Um, the four-county LMAS board isn't elected, it's appointed, so that, that's a difference there, um. There, this resolution would give me a voice through you, and if there is a um, request for continued emergency orders after that initial twenty-eight days, then it becomes like my voice can be heard through you on the Eldred County Commissioners Board. Um, I, I love the comment that one of the nice ladies made, she said, let's not repeat mistakes, let's learn from them. And she's right, let's not repeat the mistake of letting my rights and liberties be continually circumvented. Um, let's give me the voter and the constituents of the county that power and that voice back through you, um, and that's, that's really that's really where it should be, because I'm guaranteed through the constitution, and you took an oath through the constitution, the Michigan constitution, to uphold my rights and my liberties. Um, and so in closing, we believe that this resolution is a great check and balance between the LMAS board and we, the people, which is where the power should be. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, number nineteen, about saving ideas and revenue sources, we're looking for money. Or all you say. Any ideas out there?
Good luck. So am I.
I just wanna reiterate what you had mentioned last meeting on Monday about, we have writer.
Yep, I've got another card for somebody too.
Yeah, having someone that, that's all they're gonna do, is look for money.
Yeah.
And write it.
And, you know, there's two different, like Mickey was saying earlier, at a different meeting, grants are great, we need to get home, but that's a uh, short-term money, it's not a long-term solution, you know, them can get shot out at any time, we're done with this, one done with that, we need to look more towards
Single.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we, more towards the tax on tourist tax, doesn't matter, I go a lot of different places, and everywhere I go, rent a room, it seems like it says ninety-nine dollars, by the time you get your bill, it's at a hundred and forty. And it's, it's all those added taxes, and that's, we don't have that. Other places that don't get as many tourists do have it, so it's, you know, we got, there's a line there, we don't wanna tax, I don't like taxing, period. But I'm hoping that if we can get something like that, that might take But I'm hoping that if we can get something like that, that might take some of our millage off. We get enough taxes there, maybe we won't have to have a nine one one millage or a endless millage. It'll still get paid for, but it'll be from a different fund. It won't come out of our, our taxes paying for everybody that's visiting us.
Sometimes though, grants can
Oh, yes.
Give momentum.
Grants are huge. I'm all for grants. Like I said before, I'd love to see a grant writer if we could afford a grant writer and how, or how can we afford a grant writer? Right now, we're, we're in the black. We're trying to stay out of the red. That's
Yeah.
It's, what do you do? Do you go into the red a little bit to try to get in the black with a grant writer or, you know, it's, it's a fine line and a lot of us are new here. We're trying to, trying to do better and it just, we'll, we'll get there.
I, I like the idea of some grants too, but I want to remind everybody that grants are not free.
Right.
Generally speaking, they come from all of us here in this room. There's no free money.
Right.
The other thing that concerns me is when, um, depending on if and hopefully not, the state runs into trouble, that will fall back to you guys or us, the taxpayer once again. So.
Yeah, that's not long term. And it can always be taken on. So we can't, we can't budget on grants, but grants can get us extras here, extras there, you know. Uh, unfinished business? None? Financial matters, any financial matters? Meeting reports.
Rick, you're always to my left.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Finally have a, another for hearing coming up for the animal shelter from the February. Maybe reschedule it definitely. Yeah. Spoiler alert, again, pathways, we have a special meeting tomorrow regarding. That's all it, I'll let you know when I go.
Oh, I had buildings and grounds. We've dealt with everything that we did in the, in the meetings. So not much to add there.
Yeah, these been just, uh, ITs and what's with that.
Yep.
You got anything, Nick? Were you ready?
Yeah. In those, um, meetings with those contracts, you know. It was amazing how easily we got by that. There was no hard feelings. And, uh, I think Joel and, uh, Pam should be commended for helping with us with that. Yeah, and you learn a lot of things like that. And, uh, I think that was very, very cordial, the word I used for that.
I agree. At the contract between two people, you know, I'm just very young.
One was almost five hours and nobody yelled.
But I think we both in way with, um, good and bad on both sides. I mean, that's all it goes. You only got so much money. We could give more, but all we have. Number twenty three, resolution. A twenty twenty three dash eighteen. Establishing limitation for state and local government emergency. Do we have to have all five of the resolutions? Yep, I need a motion. I'll make a motion to pass this.
Oh, I have a list of reasons why. Basically, uh, they ran two small businesses, but it's very, very.
Yeah, somebody's.
Yes, I'll say.
Comments?
No, no comments. Actually, that's the one thing here.
Anybody want to do any comments?
I got a comment. Uh, while we were locked down and all this stuff about this governor, her and her family went to Florida. Had a party, her, her father's birthday party in kind of a setting, wearing no masks. While here back in Michigan, we were locked down and we were to wear masks. And I think we have to have more control of this.
What got me was, um, I was told I couldn't put my boat in the water. I first moved the boat in the water. That's I don't know where that sets on safety when I can be by myself makes ten miles of my experience.
You can paint your house, dude.
Yeah, well, and by pain.
Oh, and this is a big fish. This is a big help. Twenty twenty mask one.
So, yeah. He's could have the same amount of. And don't get me wrong, I would never make a decision for a calling on that kind of deal without getting any kind of, uh, recommendation or guidance from a person that is in that profession. Even any decision I made, we see the decision here. If I don't know a voter or have good knowledge of it, I'm going to go find and talk to somebody who does know voters.
I did. I talked to a doctor who was running a nursing home. And he was prescribing hydroxychloroquine to senior citizens. And I, I'm a preventionist, so I'm going downstate with my newspaper and I'm stopping to get a prescription just so I have it. And by the time I got there, it was restricted. And the health department had called the doctor and asked him why he was prescribing. He said, because it's curing my senior citizens. She said, well, there's no evidence of that. He wanted her to come and ask the patients in the nursing, you know. But I did get hydroxychloroquine to Mexico. Don't tell the law, they aren't here to.
The box said it anyway.
They restricted that too.
Yeah, and it would come from India.
Oh.
And it worked.
I never got it. I didn't, I didn't have COVID.
I never did either. All I did was reply.
But I know people have died from it. I know people who had it. People were coming into my hotel with oxygen tanks on. You know, thirty five years old, you know, but. Anyway.
Other questions?
My biggest hangups outside of what I spoke on last Monday. This whole twenty eight day thing, it's already a law, folks. It's there.
But she bypassed it.
She, you don't even bypass.
I did not interrupt anybody. I appreciate it. I was allowed to speak. Thank you. Whether she bypassed it or not isn't a matter for, I can't preempt a law that already exists. The law is in the state's hands. If they're not enforcing it, it then falls to the courts and the legislature to make them uphold what they're doing, not Eldred County. I can't take the state's power from the state without changing the law first. The law has to be changed. It's the law of the land. As far as L M A S, I won't try and speak to details because I don't know all the details. But for the majority of their things, they were following guidance that was issued by the state, whether it was constitutional or not, again, that's a matter for the courts. If the courts decide that the law is unjust, unfair, unconstitutional, then it falls to the legislature. That's why we have representative democracy to handle things like this. Well, again, with the L M A S, uh, the board that oversees L M A S, the four county board, uh, this was a new topic to me that, uh, about them not being elected officials. Well, they're appointed by our elected officials. If you want to use that as justification, I shouldn't be in this chair. I was not elected. I was appointed by the duly elected officials of this county in accordance with the current law, as are the folks on the L M A S board. We can't just pick and choose. I don't like this law. I'm not going to play. That's your right. Then you have to suffer the consequences for breaking the law. What law is next? If we decide we don't like this one, we're not going to play by this one. Ah, you know what? I don't like paying taxes. Let's get away with, let's do no more Medicare. Let's cancel that law. We want to get rid of the driving laws? You know? That's not decisions for us to make at this level, folks. At this level, there's, there are problems. No doubt about it. I don't care which side of the spectrum you come from or believe on. Our government's a hot mess. Period. Has been for a long time. Folks, that's our fault. Left, right, center, up, down, it's us. It is a representative democracy. We don't like it, we vote. I am not anywhere naive enough to think that the special interests, the large donors, all that don't affect and tip the scale in the favor of whoever they're trying to represent. Again, that's our fault. We're allowing it. Now, through our toleration of this skewed system. So the best thing in my opinion that we can do as a county is to set the example. Put away the strife, put away the rhetoric and do what was intended and take care of the people of the county. We don't need, we don't need this decisiveness. This resolution, you heard the prosecutor on Monday, those of you who are here, it has no teeth. It does nothing. It's, there's a law already in place. We don't need to do anything except as individuals, tell our legislatures, we don't like what you're doing, fix it. Or we'll find somebody new to do it for us. You know, there's just not, and I, I've said this on multiple occasions, there's just not enough of us, folks. There's just under nine thousand people in whole county. We don't need to fight over things like this that are just purely political. We don't. So, thank you.
Personally, I agree on that is when you say we got to tell our legislators, resolutions are a way that we can let our legislators know that this county feels. That's our only way. That's one of our only ways to end voting. This, like you said, doesn't have much teeth. No, but this is goes to, this gets sent to our legislation to say, hey, Eldred County feels this. They might take it, come up, go in the garbage. Probably. But that's what this is, our one, one of our avenues to do that.
And I could agree with that being an avenue as I voted in favor of some of the things like local control that so the state doesn't put a windmill up on top of St. Martin's Hill, you know. You know, those kinds of things that had a chance to influence something. This isn't influencing anything. The law is, the law you want is already there, except it's in the state's control, not the county's. Want that changed? We have to change the law.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Roll call? Commissioner Caprota?
Yes.
Commissioner Nettleton?
No.
Commissioner Anno?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Number twenty four, correspondence. What do you have? Things of belly spur, letter here. Yeah, let you read it. Investment into the local community. I'm not going to read the whole thing. And then the solar, I missed the end of last week. Money is for solar investment. That's all I got for the thing. Board comments?
Yeah. Look, you're right once in a while.
He's right once in a while. That's all I can add for it.
Well, it's good to have you back for Alaska, Dean.
I'm sorry.
And, uh, it was a pleasure doing the, uh, the, uh, contracts with you and the people were involved. It was a pleasure.
I think it was all wrong. Pleasure on both sides. I mean, they walked away not getting exactly what they wanted. But that's all we could give them.
I would like to echo, echo those sentiments that, you know, it was nice to see that three days, three meetings, three unions, we've got at least a tentative agreement. Everybody gained a little bit. You know, like you said, the wish lists are always bigger than, uh, than the pocketbook. But the fact that it was handled quickly, professionally, uh, we're not dragging out weeks and weeks of negotiations and arbitration and, and you're right, a lot of that falls to the county staff, put the extra effort and time in so you know, having all the numbers ready ahead of time for you to deal with. To be there on the spot to.
Yes, how about we do it this way? It'd be read to Joel, it's going to come to the spot. You know, and then, yes, that was over and above. But they were really cooperative with us. We think we let them know, this ain't going to be like before. We don't want that. It's all courthouse or court, I should say, Eldred County staff. It's, um, we've got to work together. We're going to make this day above water. We've got to work together and, uh, and pull together and help over we can. I'm tired of that.
No, you're right. You're getting your turn.
Yeah, I did a kind of a number.
You're multiple fans.
Ricky?
Uh, only one time I forgot the photograph that Dean sent me of the bought fish he caught. Well, I said he caught.
That tastes kind of rubbery. Grab away, bro. A staff comment? I've got, we've got Joel. Joel first?
So, uh, I agreed and negotiations were dreadful, but I'm glad we made it through those three. The lion's share of it, um, tomorrow and next Monday, hopefully finish up the non-unions and electives and go do it as well. And it can be done, get a budget in place, move on for December. Looking forward to getting through and being done.
Oh, just for the elected people out there, we use up all the money on the unions. I see we got a sheriff department back there. Any comment?
Um, I'd like to say that of all the negotiations I've been involved with, this was the the willingness to work back and forth was amazing.
Awesome.
Treasure?
Pretty much I was going to echo the same thing and I really want to thank you guys for the level of integrity and professionalism that the new board and elected officials brought to negotiations. Um, that has been non-existent in the past. And what it did was it opened the room to mutual respect and common decency on both sides. And it was very refreshing and not to be, uh, not to be unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're down to brief public comment. Anybody? Somebody got to come.
Oh, okay. Well, regarding the, uh, COVID and, uh, public, and I haven't noticed a pattern that there's always some sort of emergency created and that stampedes everybody into giving up our rights. And that's, I seen that right off the bat with COVID nineteen and I saw it right off the bat with nine eleven. I held my peace because I can't, I can't stand up to a candidate stampede a whole bunch of people willing to give up their rights. Now more people are starting to find out what really went down. And, okay. Bottom line is, I'd rather die on my feet than live on my knees. I'd rather die a great man than live as a slave and keep, and keep my, uh, die with my rights intact.
Thank you. Leo?
Well, I just want to recognize again that Commissioner Nettleton did a very nice job, at, at least for me expressing my thoughts and my. My thoughts and my opinions on this. Being the resolution. I also recognize that it really holds no water. It has no power, other than letting Lansing know that this nine thousand people. Support this, because as commissioners, you are now speaking for all of us. And you're well aware of that. I do take issue that we are into political stuff. All the time, no one came up to me and threatened that they were gonna take my guns. But we have a resolution now that says that, including now we have a resolution. That says that the health department really shouldn't be involved. And we should have a board of people made up of Rondos and Canouses and Vergris. That's how I see it. Well, maybe not you. But regardless, it, it is troubling. That this is how this goes and you guys are letting stand-up alger do this.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? Resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-three. Resolution twenty twenty-three. Reflects exactly the law of Michigan as stated in EMA nineteen seventy-six. Resolution twenty twenty-three is just resolving to support a law that is already in place in Michigan. There is no, no. No political. Uh, it's no political venue in terms of that. When our governor illegally ignores a law. And the law that, and an old law, again, the nineteen forty-five law that was declared unconstitutional. Ignore that and then continue to implement measures that do affect us as Algea County residents. I'm glad that we can have a commission that will support a law that is already in place.
Thank you.
Please, but again, you know, I am a nurse, I worked in contact tracing for L M S. And as my call ratio went from maybe, uh, you know, ten a day to two hundred a day. With people dying on my call, on my watch. With people going to work purposely because they didn't like having their rights taken away.
Yep.
Watching that business then become more infected and have more and more people on my call. It astounds me again that all we are asking at that time was to wear masks. Was to stay home. I don't know what other freedoms were being lost at that time. But it was real, you guys, the death was real, the illness was real. And the health department had a way to enforce people not going to work, but they chose not to. They chose not to, they don't want to be political, they want to be helpful, all right? So I don't understand why this resolution is even there. If it has no teeth, if it means nothing. I don't.
Last call?
I just wanted to make a quick comment that I think, I appreciate that most of us in this room weren't able to agree or disagree. Um, and even I watched agreement and disagreement on the board and most of us were able to like. Speak our mind in a public place without it getting, you know, too personal, I disagree with you and that's okay. You disagree with me and that's okay, I'm still able to look at you and smile, like, we are still people, so. I just wanted to say that for most of us, I, I appreciated that.
Anybody else?
That's one of my one comment, that's one thing I want to say to the board. We're here, we gotta agree to disagree. And I will listen, everybody's gonna get their chance to talk and I listen to everything and I always do my. Best to make the best decision, I'm not always right, like, no, it's right, Mickey. We're, but we're trying and that's all we can do. And but, yes, the, to agree to disagree is huge. And move on, I mean, that's all we can do, thank you.
You ready?